I mean, or not male.
Okay. I didn't fully understand.
I spear?
Yeah.
That's why he didn't.
I did it on my own day.
Okay.
That's her stature is Mrs. Manczer. I did quite bad.
Good evening. The November first meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors will now come to order. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manczer?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Here.
Ms. Lewis? Mr. Oates?
Here.
Mr. Fiero?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Morris? Dr. Hartsfield?
Here.
And Ms. Robinson?
Here.
For the record, the chair wishes to note that Natalie Lewis may be joining us remotely this evening. A quorum is present. Is there any objection to the approval of the agenda? If not, the agenda is approved. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present any information regarding Lincoln Middle School proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'll ask Jesse to come up and, well, our proposed resolution. No, you don't have to do it. It's actually me. Um, the superintendent moves, uh, the proposed resolution is that we are asking the board to take action on uh, the recommendation to reopen Lincoln Middle School for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, which in essence will give us an opportunity to increase the number of students enrolled in middle and high school programs. As the community is aware, uh, we conducted a presentation last week and had an opportunity to listen to various community members to provide input in addition to the tremendous amount of, uh, engagement activities that we conducted prior to last week. So at this point, we wanted to, uh, bring it to the board to take action on, uh, our recommendation as an administration.
At this time, the chair will entertain any questions for clarification regarding the Lincoln Middle School proposal. Are there any questions? Questions regarding clarification? First, before the motion, before the motion, I'm sorry, but that's, yes. Any questions before regarding clarification?
Okay, I have a couple. And, uh, let's see. So I just want to understand, and I don't know if we'll have access, we probably don't, to the old, um, to the old, uh, slideshow. Okay.
Take your time. Are there any other questions while we, okay, you got it. Wonderful.
Okay, so Jesse, this slide right here for the Lincoln enrollment. So I just want to make sure that I understand, uh, because I have a different view because I was a part of the Lincoln Middle School Steering Committee. So I do know that we reference a growth in enrollment for Lincoln over the last two years. However, I just want it, this is a, not a question per se, but I want it out in the public to know that in September of two thousand and fifteen, per the, um, Lincoln Middle School Steering Committee, we were actually at what we termed ideal size in Lincoln High School and Middle School as far as the number of students for the building. But at that time, it was also the decision of district administration to stop keeping a waiting list. Is that correct?
So you're, you're asking if the total enrollment was the ideal school size? Um, so, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but, um, so at that time, when you look at the school as a whole, so grades six through twelve, we were within the recommended range for school size. If you were to separate those out, we were not. You know, the high school was, was far below. This is actually the first year we've been over that seven hundred mark for the high school. So currently, that is true. Um, so going back for getting rid of the waitlist, that, that did occur with the previous superintendent from the last two years. Um, and, and since then, we've been letting in more students. Uh, that's not to say that the waitlist has completely gone away. There's still students who are on a waitlist who have not been able to go to the school, but the intent was to be able to accommodate more students.
Okay, but it wasn't necessarily that all of a sudden out of the blue, we had this huge increase in enrollment growth. It, because in, if we had kept the policy that was not necessarily a stated policy, but a practice of keeping a waiting list, the, there would not be current overcrowding. We'd still have people trying to get in, just like we had in years past, correct?
I don't think you can necessarily say that. We've, we've always had interest in, in Lincoln. There's always been, uh, a waiting list, but we've still made projections off of that. And so when we go back the last two years, even with letting those students in who perhaps would have been a part of a waiting list before, we've exceeded those projections each year. So we've had more and more interest coming to the school. Um, even we've outlined this year, um, they're, they're already scheduling tour, tours for next year, and those tours have maxed out. They already have the number of students coming. So we've definitely sent and seen an increase in students. But, uh, like you said, there, there would be some instances where kids who were on a waitlist before were granted admission the last couple of years.
Okay. Questions seeking clarification for the proposal? Yes?
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, and this is probably to, to Dr. Bedell, but following a decision, following a decision to reopen Lincoln Middle, can you briefly explain, um, the process, uh, that we will take to, to get the school ready to be open? And I guess what I'm, I'm more, um, focused on, I know in the past, there've been a lot of, uh, parent groups, community members who have given input. So going forward, uh, what will that look like in anticipation of opening the school here in a couple of years?
Sure. So from a, um, facility standpoint, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but also from a program standpoint, you'd like to have that extra time. So like we pointed out, um, with our presentation last week, um, when we opened Central Middle and Northeast Middle, we followed kind of the same game plan, where we had about a year and a half, two-year buffer to have construction, but then also have the engagement of folks, uh, regarding the middle school program. And so the intent would be to have the same, uh, this time around. Uh, we would like the architects to start working, begin that design phase right away over the next few months, and then they could begin construction in the spring of twenty eighteen and be completed in the summer of twenty nineteen. And during that, that time period, we'd have working groups that come together, being educators, uh, parents, staff, because that's going to inform a lot of that design process that the architects have, as well as programmatic within, within the building.
Board Member Oates?
Um, thank you. Um, question, prob- probably for you, maybe for Dr. Bedell, but just around, um, the operation of the program. So once the programs, you know, in the past, when the programs were split, you know, Lincoln Middle operated as its own, the high school operated as its own, and, um, they just coordinated with eighth and ninth grade en- enrollment. Once the middle school moved into the high school building, there was pretty much one leader over that whole program. Now that we're splitting again, a couple of questions I've got from the community were around, who's ultimately responsible for being sure that these, uh, programs are constantly talking that LC, PA, Middle would adequately prepare students for the IB track in the high school? Like who, you know, is that one person? Is that Dr. Bedell? Is that?
Yeah, that would actually go through, um, our school leadership department. You would, in most cases, have one assistant superintendent who's worked for, working with both schools. And it's no different now than even with the model that we put in place where we actually have what we would call feeder leaders. These are some of our principals that are working directly in a, in a vertical, from a vertical alignment standpoint with elementary, middle, and high schools, uh, that are within a particular feeder pattern. So we would take that same approach, uh, because you would have a separate principal, of course. You would have a principal who would be over the middle school, but they would be in continuous conversation, I think very similar to, uh, how our principals now operate, whether it's the Northeast, the Northeast Middle, or Central, or Central Middle.
Board Member Hartsfield?
Yes, um, comment and a question. Comment. When, um, I had the opportunity to, uh, testify before the Education Committee, um, in Jeff City, one of the major pushbacks that I received was that how did we, as a district, have a school doing so well and so many doing so poorly? Um, they did not see, uh, they didn't seem to quite understand that. So one of the questions I, I mean, I didn't understand that and still don't understand that either. But I realized that since we do have our signature models, that most of the letters that I have read from persons who are wanting to reopen the middle are either persons who have children in the signature elementaries, or persons who have been graduate, who have graduated from Lincoln and have sentimental attachments. Now, I understand that the problem that when you have signature schools, you have elementary, you have to then have a large enough middle school and, I guess, high school to feed into that, but I'm still concerned that we have not been able to put our efforts into making all of our schools, uh, where persons would want to be a part of. I'm, I'm just, I'm just still concerned with this, that we're saying a five percent, we're, we're saying we have something that works well, but now we want to change that and put a five percent down rather than just having everything that's not meeting going up. You know, when we talk about Southwest, we talk about a racist kind of piece. I'm really feeling that our-
Dr. Hartsfield, I apologize for interrupting you. At this point, we're doing clarifying questions for the proposal, but we will have a debate portion of the motion. No, but if you have a question about the proposal, but I'll come back to you first during the debate. Okay, I apologize for interrupting you. Thank you. Member Wolfsey?
I just want to talk real quick about, and it was in the, um, oh, what is it? Frequently Asked Questions, but if I understand this correctly, because the question posed was, um, the number of students necessary to give that full, comprehensive middle and high school experience at both of them. Um, so I guess one of the things I would want to understand is worst-case scenario, we split and open, high school gets to the number it needs to, but what if the middle school doesn't? Is just the downside that potentially we would be running a less efficient building, therefore some of the services and programs would need to be scaled back?
I'll let Linda answer.
We debate among ourselves all the time whether this is a curriculum question, a financial question, but it is really, it's really, um, one that we share together as we wrestle with it because it is a good question. Um, and I'll let Dr. Shepherd speak to the effective program piece. From a fiscal perspective, moving children from the high school to the middle school, in your scenario where the middle school doesn't grow, we would have a higher cost per pupil in that middle school program than we do now because we share leadership. But if the high school is growing, we would have been adding some of those expenditures anyway to support that growth. So at the end of the day, it's difficult to say that it would be fiscally less efficient in total. It would look different because it was physically separated. But programs that are in place today would be able to sustain because we're supporting them today.
But, so programs today could remain. But when we did the Steering Committee, the, one of the main reasons we were talking, we weren't really in the, um, overcrowded mode yet. We knew we were headed down that way. But was to give middle schoolers that same experience that Central and Northeast were in the teaming or exploratory wheel and all that, which does add costs. I assume those were part of the dollars in there and that. I just, I don't want to, I guess my question really is, if we're making the decision for that reason, and then if we can't get there, what's the net effect of that?
So we do believe that we can get there, but one, one of the main things that we wanted to make sure that we did in this proposal is do a middle school revitalization plan. So this is about not just Lincoln, but this is about middle schools. Making sure that as we move as a district towards providing more of the CTE options for our students at high school, that we are able to provide some of those same options at middle school so kids have a true career pathway. And so that, we want to do that at Lincoln Middle School, and we want to do that at Central and Northeast as well. And so part of what we've been working on is doing a lot of focus groups with students, with parents, with community members, community college people, just to see what is the platform of Kansas City so that we can make sure that we're preparing a twenty-first century workforce. We don't want kids to graduate and then there are no jobs and the things that they've graduated with the certificates for. And so, uh, part of what we're doing is making sure that all three of those middle schools have viable options for kids so that they could transition from the middle school to the high school with the skill set, and then we want them to graduate. Of course, our, our end goal is for every kid in Kansas City Public Schools to graduate with the complete, as a completer.
Can I chime in? Um, and I think this really goes to our current enrollment as a school district. And I think about Northeast Middle School, which is already at ninety-two percent capacity. So the plan to move those kids and, and, and open up that school has paid dividends in terms of increasing enrollment within that particular building. We all know that we have work to do at Central, and I think everybody in here understands that that is an area that we have to continue to focus on, uh, ensuring that we are building up that middle school. Uh, but our enrollment trends, I mean, we generally have hit our numbers of a decline pretty much on the money the past several years. And as we've stated, this doesn't include the number of kids right now that we did not allow in because we simply don't have the space, and the number of kids who didn't even apply because they knew that they didn't even have an opportunity. Our numbers as of today are about three hundred and twenty-two kids above what was projected this year in terms of, you know, this, this enrollment increase and this restored level of, uh, confidence that people are beginning to have in this school system. So think about it from this perspective. We just started a new marketing campaign. We have not marketed our schools, I think, in the way that we need to market our schools. We have not marketed our signature schools at all, and we need to do a better job of showing people the strengths that we have within our neighborhood schools. We actually have a plan, and we're doing that, and we're implementing that, and we believe that we're going to see those results. This three hundred and twenty-two student increase that we have right now is based on a limited amount of marketing that we didn't even start until the second semester last year.
We have one last question for clarification, and then we will entertain a motion and begin the debate portion of this, um, proposal. Ms. Manczer?
When we had the presentation, the last time you talked, you, um, provided a slide that talked about school staffing and programs after full implementation of the plan, the year twenty twenty-one. And so, um, based on year twenty twenty-one, you show that Lincoln Middle School would, uh, have a projected enrollment of four hundred and sixty-six students with an estimated annual staff budget of four point two mil. Uh, Central Middle School would have four hundred and thirteen students with an, um, uh, estimated staff budget of six mil for Central, and Northeast Middle would have seven hundred and fifty-nine students with an estimated budget of eight point two million, and that would be on that year. Uh, are those, um, do, do those, uh, numbers there, uh, show ideal capacity in terms of the projected student enrollment? Or what you would anticipate the enrollment would be? And would we assume generally those would be the annual operate staff costs for those schools over a several-year period?
I can answer the question about enrollment, and then I'll have Ms. Quinley answer the, uh, financial piece. Uh, I can tell you for sure, that's just projected based upon what we've seen using cohort survival and then projecting out for, for those buildings. So that's not exactly ideal, what we want for those schools, especially when we look at the student enrollment for Central Middle School being at four fifteen. We'd, we'd love to have a school much larger than that. So it's not necessarily what we want to see. This is what we believe can happen based upon, uh, you know, our, our math and our calculations for student enrollment projections.
To the budget piece or the cost piece, the variable will be going forward, only growth in students and need to add staff, and then those typical annual increase in costs, improvement in salaries, increased costs of benefits, those kinds of things. So that won't be a stagnant number you would see forever. It's, it's projected today based on where we are with appropriate annual allowances for cost of living increase, and then growth in student population. So that would continue as any particular building grew.
And one, just a follow-up on that, and you've listed the Missouri standard for, like, one, uh, principal and assistant principal per, you know, uh, what, X number of students. Would you be striving to, to reach the Missouri standard on that?
Well, when we speak about equity, remember, as we did, we have had many conversations about equity. And, uh, part of those conversations, um, are directed at to, um, towards our middle schools, and we look at staffing. And we realize, based on our data and all of the other things that we've looked at, um, the qualitative information that we've gotten from students, parents, surveys, whatever, um, that we have to staff our schools based on need and not based on a formula. Um, I think if there's, if there's one thing that stands out, and that would be that point when we look at how our schools are funded across the board. Um, we do currently use the DESI formula. However, when we think about equity, equity is not, I mean, it's, it's, we, that's, that provides equality, but it's not providing the equity that our schools need. So equity is more about us providing you with what you need versus giving you what it is that you're appropriated to have based on a formula. Um, so I think, um, if I were to say, um, what would happen here, I would say that we would be actually staffing all of those schools based on a set of needs. And we have began having those conversations about, with principals and staff, about what is it that you need in order to move the needle? Because we certainly want all of our schools to move forward.
Thank you. It would now be in order to have a motion to approve the Lincoln Middle School proposal.
I move that the, um, Board of Education approve the administration's recommendation to expand Lincoln College Preparatory Academy Middle School.
I second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the reopening of Lincoln Middle School for the twenty nineteen, twenty school year. Now is the time to have discussion and debate on the motion. We'll start with, uh, Board Member Hartsfield.
Um, I guess the part of the proposal that I have most problems with is, uh, developing a quota that does not, um, represent what, uh, Lincoln has. And I think once you have something that's doing well, you maintain that. So that would be problematic for me. And second of all, I think, as I stated before, I think that, um, we still have seats that are in some of our other middle schools that are, have not been filled. We have not been able, at this point, to, uh, bring the academic standards where it would be as a, as a desired school as maybe Lincoln, and so I'd like to see where our efforts are put there, not as a byproduct of this, but as a primary effort.
It's, yes.
So, you know, I want to start by saying that everything I'm going to say is not a reflection on how I feel about the capabilities of this district, this superintendent, this cabinet, and where we're going. I believe we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And I do believe that everybody in this school district is concerned about the educational equity of every single one of our students. Um, I also know, because I have a child at Lincoln, how overcrowded it is, and how the students do deserve a true middle school experience. But I also believe we have to honor, we have an obligation to honor, um, first, the commitments that we've made previously to other constituents, um, through long ago, the master plan, which has now morphed into our strategic plan, to be able to offer more core classes, to be able to offer more electives, to be able to offer more athletics and extracurricular activities, and most important, to create feeder patterns throughout the district for every family. And I feel strongly that we need to honor that commitment before we reprioritize um, expanding a selective school, um, over that commitment. I'm specifically concerned about the impact that having, um, Lincoln expanded this time before, we have honored that commitment and built out the southern boundary, the impact that that will have on schools like Southeast, where I know for a fact we lose families at third, fourth, and fifth grade because there is no way for them to see themselves, um, if their child can't get into Lincoln, or, um, for whatever reason, um, they won't attend their other neighborhood, um, feeder school. I think that it concerns me because I think that if we don't honor that promise, that we may be putting at risk that entire, um, part of our district. Because parents will start to de-select us, starting in kindergarten, if they can't see a path. And so those are just things that I am weighing, um, when I, when I think about this decision.
Board Member Oates?
Thank you. Um, I guess just statement on, I guess where I, I laid, I fall down on this. Um, I know a lot of the focus on this has been on middle school expansion, and I think I've kind of made it clear that in my opinion, I've always kind of seen this as a high school expansion. Currently, we have about fourteen sc- high schools in this system, so district and charter, serving only six thousand kids, um, with a proposed three or four additional programs that could be coming online over the next three or four years. Um, to leverage that high school building with the built-in population of already seven hundred, which is what the master plan said was a minimum, that you can operate a good high school, I think, um, and use that building to move towards a thousand, to have that density that we want in a building that we know with that comes expanded opportunities, activities, um, services. Um, I, I know from the beginning of the year, when I was reading about the opening of some other, um, high schools, that even parents there, um, expressed some trepidation at attending those small boutique high schools because they know that, um, small population, small services, small activities. And so I am a proponent of this. Um, I do hope in the future, though, um, as far as middle school, that we, we continue to look at this because, the five percent doesn't make me feel too good about it. Just to be honest, uh, for five percent of five fifty is about twenty-eight. So we're talking about twenty-eight total school kids. And maybe that's all who fall in that margin. I don't know. I, it's just something I'd really like us to take a look at as we move forward in this. Um, how many kids are we missing who are those, I'll call them those composite one thirty kids? Um, but, you know, since we've capped it at five percent or twenty-eight kids total, um, that, um, fi- you know, I guess finally just, I feel like expansion of this other, of the high school is a good idea. Um, you know, I think the goal when we, you know, went to the master plan with this co-locating Southeast and AC Prep in that building, was that hopefully one day those programs would outgrow each other. other. And it, right now, Lincoln and Lincoln Middle have done that. At seven hundred and three fifty, they're both ready to operate on their own, and so I'm in support of it.
Board Member Manser?
You know, I'm, I am in support of this expansion. As a parent, my three children, I experienced both, I had both experiences. I had a child who had the full middle school experience in the Lincoln Middle Building, and then the high school experience. And then I had two children who were part of the consolidated building, and that consolidation happened as the part, as part of rightsizing. I know that in that rightsizing process, we put, we were required to put caps on enrollment, and so it created a lid on who could enroll. And I think for some families, that drove some families away, because they understood there was a cap. I support this project right now, because I think at, at this point, I want to sort of echo something my colleague Matt Oats said. In many ways, we could see this as a, a high school expansion, because it, there are increasing demands for seats in that high school. But in fact, there's no way for us to provide those seats. At the same time, for a number of years, ever since the rightsizing process, families have been asking for a true middle school experience for their children. When you are in the high school with your middle school child, your child is really, the middle schoolers are really part of the high school. And it's difficult. I think the administration makes a tremendous effort to create a separate experience, but that, that isn't easily realized when you're dominated by the big high school sports and the clubs, and just bigger kids all around, big bodies all around. So I think that we have shown this growth. I do not see this as, as out of alignment with the master plan. The potential expansion of Lincoln Middle to reopen the middle school was contemplated during master planning. That was stated and discussed as part of the master plan. In addition, it was also understood that we are lacking in a middle school in the south part of our city, south of Brush Creek. That is also a very important opportunity. And so I think that that is an issue that still deserves attention. It is work that has yet to be done. But at this point in time, I'm feeling comfortable with the information I've received, and feel that we are well poised to make this work. And to Ms. Wolfsey's point, we can chew gum and walk, and we have to keep moving on addressing our other needs to strengthen our middle schools and also south of Brush Creek.
Board Member Fiero?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. You know, I support this motion, and I'm confident in our administration, in their recommendation to open Lincoln Middle. And I have confidence in Dr. Bedell, that he is listening to all the feedback provided by my colleagues. I know there has been discussion, great concern, which I, I support that, that we definitely want to convey to all of our parents and children, that everyone is important. So while, if this decision does go forward, it's going to signal, while we're making a huge investment in this particular school, I, I want to share to the general public that I have confidence in Dr. Bedell, in what he has shared, that while we do this in opening up a new school, we're also going to follow through on the steps that he's already taken. This administration has had a strategic plan adopted. This framework has been handed down to each principal at each school, to then use as a way to assess what the needs of their students and families are. Dr. Bedell has also shared there's going to be some additional assessments at these school levels, and I'm confident that once that process is complete, we're going to be sitting here in about six to twelve months, with Dr. Bedell saying, okay, now we're ready for some other investments. And, and it is about equity. We, we have a very special school district built with cultural diversity and committed parents, and we owe it to them to respond accordingly to those needs. And again, I, I'm, I'm confident that Dr. Bedell and his team will get us there. My final comment would be that I support anything that's going to put us in the best position to compete in the future. And a number of my colleagues and, and folks that are out in the, in the community, like myself, have been involved with the district over time, and I'm sure we can each share a number of stories of, I was on this committee, and we decided that, and I worked with this superintendent, and this is what happened. You know, that's all great, but we're, we're here today, and we're focused on the future. And, and we have to operate in a sense of urgency. We have to operate in a sense that we are not afraid of anyone else. This is our district. We are the, the people that are in this room are the people that decided not to leave. I'm a proud graduate of Westport High School back in nineteen eighty-four. I live in the west side. My children went to public schools. I didn't leave, and none of you have left. So we have to trust in the decision to open up this school, as well as other future decisions that this superintendent will bring to us, to rewrite the history of the Cansey Public Schools.
Board Member Evans?
There are nine of us, and even if I did not support the opening of the middle school, I heard the cry of the community last week. And overwhelmingly, if I'm not mistaken, there was support from them. And we will also, also keep in mind that we were put here by them. So when I saw the numbers that, that Ms. Quinley crunched for us last week, to me, that's a small price to pay for the benefits that opening up this school will give us. And I wrote down that we have to continue to figure out ways to make our district more attractive. And what better way to do it than opening Lincoln?
Board Member Lewis?
I so appreciate, this is what, being a member of a board of nine, eight other brilliant people will do for you, and kind of how it probably tended to be, because I came to this meeting tonight very uncertain, as far as what my vote would be. But the more I listened to my colleagues, the more I listened to what's going on, I realized that my vote's really going to be about what I've heard, and also my trust in Dr. Bedell and the team that he has put together. It'd also be about my role to stay on the high ground and trust him to figure out how to do what we need to do. I will always, 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 Dr. Bedell, have the question about what about the rest? And what I pray with all my being is that I don't look up six months from now, a year from now, or two months from now, and wonder, when are we going to make sure that we have the special votes, the special proposals, that are one hundred percent about serving those students that are performing at our lowest level? Because they're just as valuable. So I, I support the decision to open Lincoln. I'm a little questionable about the need for the five percent, especially given if there's a waiting list, but I trust your judgment on that. But I look forward to being asked, from a board perspective, to do those exceptional things on behalf of all our students, and I don't want to wait on it.
Board Member Wolfsey?
Just, I guess, this maybe should have been a clarifying question, but I want to make sure I understood what we spoke about earlier, that if we are to do Lincoln, a south zone middle school will not be able to be done simultaneously at the same time, and that at best, we might be a couple of years out for that. If, if we're able, if things move the direction you're hoping them to move, at least, maybe, I don't want to put a date on it.
Yes, but that is true. And we said that last week, that we will one hundred percent not drop the ball on the south middle school. We will continue to monitor enrollment. It is very difficult to simultaneously open up two middle schools at the same time, given the fact that we have engaged the community, we had a south middle school committee, ensuring, sharing the data, looking at the potential enrollment. Projections would be very difficult at this stage to be able to justify, from a financial standpoint, that we're going to have the ability to open it up. What makes it a lot easier with Lincoln Middle is that you're moving three hundred and, three hundred-plus students already into a building, and then you're just building on that. So it makes it a lot more seamless, it makes it a lot easier to run your programs. But I do, one hundred percent, will sit here and share with everyone, we have a hole in south of, the south of Brush Creek area that we have to fill, and we're going to look at those elementary schools, continue to look at enrollment, and make sure that, as we think about projections and where we are financially, that we can do it. Now, here's what I will tell you. There's a lot of things that haven't been done in this city for decades, and if you want us to be able to open up and do both of them simultaneously, there is a way. It's called bond referendum, something that all school districts do across the country. We have not had one since nineteen sixty-six. And so there are ways that we can generate funds to be able to service our communities, and to be able to do what we need to do, and that's part of the reason why we hired Ms. Linda Quinley, because she's an expert in doing those things. But just trust me that if we had the money to do both, and I brought this to our cabinet about a month ago, I said, I'm going to throw this bomb on the table. What if we were able to do both? And, you know, we talked about it, deliberated on it, and at, at, at that point, financially, we just don't have the ability to sustain both simultaneously.
Kind of building that, because this did go into my thought process, and we talked about this, you and I, was that even if we did also have the financial resources, maybe, there is also the component of it, that bringing two schools online at the same time is a huge lift. And to do them well, and so we have, so that's what's going through my head, is, you know, we want to do them well, it's just the, as I've expressed to Dr. Bedell, it's the order in which we're doing them. And I want to be a hundred percent clear, just like all my colleagues have, this is not a reflection on how I personally feel about Dr. Bedell, everybody knows I love him, but that I have the utmost faith that if he says he will do something, he will, to the best of his ability, try.
Well, and I do, I, I will, but I, I've said this from day one, that if we start looking at equity, and I said this year, this with all of the board in an executive session months ago, can we truly say that we're providing inequitable education, no opportunity, for all of our kids and all of our communities across this district? And if everybody can sit in here and say, yes, I'd love for you to show me how. And so what I mean by that is, the kids that need more, are we doing what we need to do to help level the playing field? If we have holes within our school district, from an equity standpoint, are we servicing the communities, because everybody pays taxes? Are we servicing those communities right now where there are holes within the school system? And the answer right now is no, we're not. And so we are not going to stop at doing what we need to do, but also, we have to keep in mind that we are in a very competitive market, and if we don't do something, we're just going to stay in this bunker, and I don't know that we're going to be able to do the things we need to do to continue to push this district forward, if we don't begin to make some moves, in my mind, that are just, quite frankly, the best moves that will serve the best interest of this school district in the long term.
I do. Yes, Mr. Evans?
Thank you. Make sure I'm hearing. When you say move, if we could move two schools at the same ti... I, I don't, I'm, 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 I don't know if I'm hearing that right, because if you could move two schools at the same time, if you don't have the numbers, but you have the money, does that make sense? Don't you need kind of both?
Yes, you do, and I think that was part of the reason why we did present that on the table. And one of the things we did find out about the southern middle school component was that we just simply did not have the students at this point to justify opening it up. So yeah, we could have the resources, and I, and that was the reason why I brought it to the table, how long would it take, then, for us to be able to run that school under capacity before we would be able to, to, to break even? And so we talked about all of those things.
I do have a couple of comments. One, I want to applaud Dr. Bedell and his team for getting us to this point. Not only does it take vision, but it takes leadership in order to get us to a point of making critical decisions about how to move this district forward. So I applaud you and your team for this. You know, in my opinion, Lincoln Middle School should have never been closed, and we've demonstrated that by opening up Central and Northeast. When we just, when we learned that taking the middle schoolers out and putting them in other places was not the best decision, it was a performing, a highly performing school, so I'm glad that we are seeing that it's overcapacitated, and that we're going to expand it, it needs expansion. And rising tides lifts all boats, and not only in the standpoint of Lincoln, but in the standpoint of our middle school revitalization plan. And so when we opened up Central Middle School, that was rising tides lifts all boats, and looking at Northeast, as well as now Lincoln Middle School, because it's all about our system. We've demonstrated the commitment to improving our overall system through, if we look at our building leaders, and what we've done to really change how our buildings are being led by specific personnel. We have a strong theory of change, and I believe in our ability to build a quality system, not just quality seats, and that's what this decision is about. The equity in our resources, how we've distributed them, distributed them, have been clear regarding the equity amongst our middle school system. So I'm very happy about this, and this is the right decision at the right time for our system, so thank you. This will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond, yes, the motion is the approval of the middle school proposal, Lincoln Middle School proposal. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Dr. Hartsfield?
No.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor, and the proposal is approved. The next item of business is, the, the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present any information regarding Wellner Architects.
Yeah, at this time, we'll ask Ms. Quinley to come up, but it's, it's simple, we're just asking the board at this point to take action on approving Contract C seventeen dash twenty-nine Architectural Services for Lincoln Academy and Lincoln Middle with Wellner Architects to begin to look at completing this project, so that we can do the renovations needed to prepare this school for a two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty opening.
At this time, we can entertain questions for clarification regarding this proposal.
Um, just one question, and I guess it's not necessarily limited to this proposal, but I know that we're planning on using some of that, the reserve fund balance for this. At some point in the future, can we get an update on that, and like, what we've spent, and how much left we have?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It would now be in order to have a motion to approve this contract.
So moved.
Second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the Contract C seventeen twenty-nine for the Architectural Services for Lincoln Academy and Lincoln Middle with Wellner Architects for AE Services and the amounts indicated. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor, and the contract is approved. Now for the monthly board workshop presentation, I recognize Dr. Bedell to present Board Policy four point two, point two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to ask Jennifer Collier, our Chief Human Resource Officer, to come up to present on Board Policy four point two point two, and Louise Cordova, wherever I guess he's stepped out, but he will come in and present on the other component. So, Ms. Collier?
Good evening, Board Chair Robinson, Board Executive Team, Community Staff. This evening, we will, I will be presenting on Board Policy four point two. And Board Policy four point two states the superintendent shall neither cause nor allow ... And Board Policy four point two states, "The superintendent shall neither cause nor allow KCPS circumstances for staff. That includes employees, independent contractors, and volunteers that are unfair, undignified, unsafe, disorganized, or unclear, or fail to recognize collective bargaining agreements that have been negotiated with KCPS." So in terms of our negotiations update, um, I presented earlier in the fall regarding our negotiations. But for the AFT, we successfully completed the negotiations in the spring of two thousand seventeen. Um, and so currently, our CBA for the Certified and the Classified are posted to the district website. So our employees can reference, um, um, those agreements there and to get additional information if they would like it. Also, our principals were provided highlights and key changes of the CBA, and then they then in turn share that information with their respective staff. We are currently, uh, bringing our negotiation season to a close with the SEIU. Um, we've made, um, great progress in, in that agreement, uh, during, during, during this agreement season. And so once the agreement has been finalized, it will also be posted, uh, published and posted to our district website and made available for all of our employees so they can access it, um, when they feel necessary. Um, I also spoke before about our Safe Schools Training, and so at that time, we had just rolled out the Safe Schools Training. Um, there were about fourteen modules that our employees had to cover on some really critical areas. And so it's really important that all of our employees receive training around how to deal with, uh, critical situations that they may encounter in the schools or in the workplace. And so one of the, um, emphasis this year is customer service, and so there was training provided there, training provided around FERPA, particularly for our school staff, but for all employees. Also sexual harassment, whether that's staff, on staff, or staff to students, making sure our employees understand what that looks like and what the parameters are and what we expect as an employer. Also, active shooter training. Um, it's very extensive training for our staff. As, as we know the climate within our country, we want to make sure that our employees are well-prepared to handle any situation that could potentially arise. Um, also, um, in considering, uh, some of the conditions that our students deal with around bullying, making sure that our staff is, uh, in, informed about what bullying looks like and how they can address it, um, when they, um, identify it. Also, making sure our staff is well-informed around homelessness with our students so that we are providing the services and the supports that they need in order to be successful. And then also child abuse. So these are just some of the, um, topics that were covered, um, in this online training. This training was, um, required of all of our employees. It didn't matter whether they are in the school or what position they hold. Every employee is, um, required to complete the training. And our deadline was actually yesterday, October thirty-first. And we are pleased to say that, um, as of this morning, the completion rate was ninety-five percent. And so for the few people that have not completed the training, um, we are furthering, further disaggregating that data to determine who they are. And then also, we're sharing that information with our, um, supervisor so they can then follow up and address, um, those employees who need to complete that training. Another piece, uh, was the Employee Handbook. And as I've stated before, we are really proud to have an employee handbook. In the time that I've been here, um, I had not seen an employee handbook. And I think it's really important that all of our staff members understand what our expectations and our policies are as a school system. And so we now have this, um, as another, um, resource for our staff members. And there are critical, there's critical information in the Employee Handbook that our staff members are able to reference. Um, one of the things that I really appreciate is now posted on the website, and when our employees go into the internet to look at the handbook, they can select any particular topic that they are interested in. They don't have to flip through the entire manual. Um, if there's a particular topic around payroll that they're wanting information, they can click on it, and it's easily and readily accessible for them, a quick reference point. And so we're really excited about that also, because it's laid out the way it is on the website. As information changes, we can quickly update it so that it's always relevant and up to date for our employees. The other piece of this is was providing training, because we want to make sure that all of our employees understand, um, what the handbook entails. And so to date, we have provided four trainings. Three of those occurred prior to the start of school. And just last week, we had a training for our custodial construction, construction and maintenance team members who were unable to attend the first three trainings. We are also, um, uh, we've embedded, um, the new employee training into the new employee orientation. So even for our employees who are hired throughout this school year, they also are receiving this information about the Employee Handbook, where to access the information and what it entails. And then also, we're continuing to provide training throughout the year. Our employees can sign up on my learning plan to attend the new Employee Handbook training if they're interested in getting more information. Questions?
Questions? Um, one of the things that I asked my, I would ask my colleagues to do was, would be to pull out the monitoring report that's in your blue, uh, binder. And we would like to look over the, and the administration has asked if we look over the interpretation as well as the KPIs, um, as we're asking any questions about the, the, uh, in addition to asking any questions about the presentation that's presented. But we do need to make sure that we have a clear direction regarding the interpretation of the policy and what we're measuring.
Just to be sure, is this, are these proposed interpretations or KPIs? Or these, this is the interpretation?
This is what the administration, this is how the administration interprets the policy. And these are the KPIs that they've come up with, but we have not given any feedback on these KPIs, I don't think.
No, not yet. Right. So, yeah, we would like for you all to let us know your thoughts on this and the direction that you'd like for us to go.
For sure. Madam Chair, is there a timeline on, on getting back to the law on that?
Um, great. If we could, um, as we're monitoring it this month, that we would be able to do that this month and the month of November. Um, and in the future, as we get the monitoring reports in advance, this is a great time right now during the workshop to be able to provide that feedback and take advantage of the group conversation around that. So, yes.
Okay.
I just want to report that, um, our one employee, Dr. Bedell, was a part of that ninety-five percent.
Yes, he was. Yes, he was.
Madam Chair, we don't need to put that out in the public. It was a struggle, but I got through.
But he did it. He, he accomplished it.
We are monitoring.
So with, within Policy, um, four point two, um, at this time, Dr. Cordoba and his team will come to report further, um, on Policy four point two point two, which is really regarding emergency preparedness.
I just got a, uh, uh, armed signal from, uh, Mr. Fiero. He says, "That means keep it short." Because there's, I, I think there's a, a game going on tonight or something. Hmm. So I'll speak Spanish so I can get it out quicker. How's that? All right. Buenas noches, good evening. Madam Chair Robinson, Dr. Bedell, board members, colleagues, and guests. Uh, I'd like to take maybe about twenty seconds to really, um, highlight the work that our sec, men and women of our Safety and Security Department do on an everyday basis. And, uh, I would like at this time for Major Harris to stand up, Captain Gilmore stand up, and his team so that we can acknowledge them first. Thank you, team. According to the Everytown for Gun Safety Support Fund, since two thousand thirteen, a gun has been shot in a school or on school grounds more than two hundred and forty times. And education institutions have spent millions of dollars in recent years to bolster campus security preparedness. The Kansas City Public Schools Safety and Security Department is responsible for ensuring and maintaining safe climates in all of our school buildings. One of the superintendent's core beliefs states, "We must provide a safe learning environment where students feel protected and learning can flourish." The superintendent's strategic plan goal number two speaks to the whole child. Safe, challenged, and supported. This is the framework in which the Kansas City Public Schools Safety and Security Department promotes safety, learning environments. Protecting students and staff, keeping facilities and campuses safe, requires a continual vigilance and preparedness from school administrators, staff, and the community. We cannot do this alone. The Safety and Security Department currently prepares the KCPS students and staff for emergency situations in compliance with Board Policy. Security Department plans continue to promote the preparedness of everyone to secure the properties. We must continue to possess and have in place to avoid the history of deadly episodes in education settings, such as Sandy Hook, Virginia Tech, Columbine, and all the way back more than fifty years ago to the sniper in the clock tower of the University of Texas. Leaves no doubt that the students and staff and schools and universities need to be prepared. The operating budget for the Security Department allows us to hire seventy-four full-time employees, which consists of two dispatchers, one office manager, an office secretary, director, and assistant site manager. Forty-five site-based officers are assigned to middle schools and high schools. Of those forty-five, seven are first-line armed supervisors. We have twenty-three armed patrol officers with a working shift of a twenty-four-hour day. We have an A, a B, and a graveyard, or the officers call it dog watch. I'm not sure why they call it dog watch, but it's a night watch. This is the layout of the organization personnel. So I've provided for you in your red booklets. Inside, you'll see the org chart. Just take a look at it, and that's an indication of our department and the staff within our department. So what is the hiring process? Perspective candidates undergo a rigorous, rigorous process. The candidates first must pass a written, and then they have to pass a written report test. A three-member panel interview. Then, if they're recommended, they go to HR. And then they must submit to a pre-screening, screening psychological exam conducted by a psychiatrist that specializes in law enforcement screenings. And then pre-employment drug screen, as well as an annual screening. Some companies say this is the most rigorous process for a security professional, and that's true. We hold the high mark, and the reason we do that, we want to hire the right individuals for these positions to ensure the highest standards necessary to perform the duties and positions. All of our safety and security officers undergo a series of trainings that are consistent with the Police Officer Standard Training. So what does this mean, Police Officers Standards? Well, it means that the officers receive certification training equivalent to those that are, uh, can, uh, cadets at a police academy. That's the rigor. Some of the examples are represented on the slide. I won't go through all of them. You guys can read that. But I also want to, uh, uh, mention that we do offer, uh, the security officers a, opportunity to go to conferences. Uh, our Captain Gilmore attended the Council of Great City Schools Conference. And, uh, Major, uh, Harris attended the National Association of School Resource Officers. And they bring back information to me, and then we together discuss how we're going to apply the information that they've learned at the conferences to better facilitate, uh, our trainings. The cost for trainings this year, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, about eighty-seven thousand. Uh, the cost for this year, actually, last year's twenty sixteen, but for this year, we're already at forty-nine point six thousand dollars. And since two thousand thirteen, we spent three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So what does this look like? We asked, "Well, that's real expensive, isn't it?" Well, not really. And I heard, uh, Board Member Fiero say it's an investment. And the investment is to ensure that our students are safe and that we ensure that we create a safe learning environment in schools with the best safety and security professional. We also have an integrated systems, security systems. You can read that. But the Kansas City Public, uh, uh, Security Department uses the following resources to ensure buildings from the, protecting them from the outside elements. The, the electronic access card provides staff with the ability to control who enters the building. Cameras work in conjunction with our electronic access cars to monitor and observe what is going on inside and outside of the buildings. Hall pass is a visitor management system and screens people from entering in the building. Metal detectors, devices can uncover concealed weapons that someone is trying to bring in to the building. Fire alarms, self-explanatory, radio communications are, 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 are presented to, uh, building administrators to call in the event of a threat. And I'm happy to report that we are also adding another resource called the Text-a-Tip Program. And this program allows students to report anonymously any crimes that might be committing, uh, during the day, suicide ideations, ho, if, if a student is homeless, or any other concerns that they may have. Text-a-Tip, and that's through a partnership with the Kansas City Crime Commission. Lockdown, tornado, earthquake, we have drills. These are state statute mandatory drills that we have to do. The lockdown has to be supervised, and the tornado and earthquakes do not. And we have one drill per lockdown, one drill per tornado, and one drill for an earthquake. In our next slides, we show how aggressive we are. The graph illustrates in the red KCPS required drills. In the green, it shows where we're at. So we're overachievers by the numbers, you can see. We want to be the best, but we also want people to practice these drills so they can be accustomed to having those. So what are these numbers indicate? Well, the three ten, the three ten is the number of drills that we had conducted. Uh, the formula, um, if I understand it correctly, is ten drills, uh, per school times thirty-one school. And in the, uh, uh, other smaller numbers, you have sixty-two number represents two drills times thirty-one schools, and that's your total. So these are the, the required drills that we must, uh, uh, have. But also, we take an aggressive approach of doing as many drills as we have to do. With that, you have your standard operating emergency guidelines. If you just took a look at the tabs, we have drills for other things that aren't required of the district. So in retrospect, we want to do the best we can in providing the drills that we believe are necessary to ensure that our students are safe. And with that, I'm done with my presentation. And if there's any questions, I'm going to have my, uh, security, uh, team up here to answer questions that I probably would not be able to answer. I've been in this position for about three months now, but I'm going to tell you, uh, we're moving forward with a aggressive approach on ensuring that our community, uh, what we call community policing officers are in the community, uh, that they are becoming mentors to our students, because that's what we want them to do. And also, looking nice, uh, professional. So Dr. Bedell said, "Well, why don't we change the, uh, the, the blue uniforms to a khaki pants and a polo shirt?" I thought, "That's a great idea." There you go. They look sharp, don't they? They look better than me in this blue suit. But anyway, team, come on up, and if there's any questions, come on up. Questions?
Um, we'll start with, uh, Ms. Wolfsey.
Um, all right. I loved the text-a-tip thing, and I don't know, because I know in talking to students that they, they know a lot more than we know. Um, and in fact, just this last week, had an opportunity for a parent to talk to me about how would a student tell, you know, faculty or whatnot? So my question is, how are we promoting that within? Because I don't know that this particular student may have known, and maybe do we need to do more promotion of that?
Uh, currently working with the Kansas City Crime Commission, and we've already, uh, developed posters for each school, each school mascot. Those will be distributed to the schools. Uh, and then, uh, Ms. Natalie, she's not here to talk about it, but we'll work with her, you know, to put it out to the public.
And just to add to that, Ms. Wolfie, we started this conversation and partnership about a year ago, and now it's coming into a reality. And there's about thirty-nine schools in the area, school districts, that have adopted this text-to-tip, and they've already been able to save lives with the text-to-tip.
Ms. Manser?
Thank you for your presentation. About three years ago or so, I sat on a committee that involved administration and representatives of the board. Mr. Carl Evans was on that Safety and Security Committee, I believe, and former board member Curtis Rogers served on that committee. And at that time, the committee was formed because we, there had been some incidences in some of the buildings that precipitated the need for that and for doing building-by-building audits. I'm thinking that you all will recall some of that activity, and it was a very thorough process. And so one of my questions is, those audits were looking at security of buildings, both from external entry, but also internal areas where there could be problems. And then, working with staff to make sure that staff were fully conscious of those internal areas, if they could be blocked off in some way that was done, or it may just have been a kind of redeployment of staff internally. So can you tell us anything about how you maintain some of that, and do you go back and review some of that audit work and sort of where that stands? Because I know that was a thorough process, and I think part of our overall commitment, board and administration, to really upping our game in terms of the safety of students and staff within our building.
Yeah, I'll just answer quickly on my behalf. I don't know what happened to the committee, but under this new leadership, we are going to, we had a conversation about bringing that committee back so that we can not only, when there's a problem, but just having a committee to talk about some of the good things, but also some of the things that we need to improve on. But Marcus, if you want to add anything to that?
Well, I would just say the slide that Dr. Cordova just presented is the result of that safety committee that you were on. I remember you were on there, and Mr. Evans was on there. Integrated security system, it did exactly what you just addressed those concerns that you just mentioned.
And if I could add to that, the reason why we, the reason why a lot of those numbers were higher than the proposed numbers is because of those safety audits, and we went in and we did extra drills to train staff and offer them feedback on those drills.
But yes, we're going back to that.
Board Member Oats?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. This has been something I've kind of wanted to circle back around, because I think the role of our officers is very important in ensuring a good learning environment for our students. Their role is obviously to protect the building, protect all the students, staff, everyone inside. A lot of times, we're seeing, or oftentimes, we're seeing across the nation, especially in urban schools, though, that officers are being also used in like, as like a disciplinary enforcement. And, you know, that kind of use of officers can impact their relationship with their, with the students, right? If they're seen as disciplinarians and not there for their, their safety, you know, that text-to-tip and things like that can get impacted. So I wanted to get an idea, A, about what our philosophy was around the use of officers in the building. And then, just any training we're giving staff about how to use officers, and then what authority do officers have to push back in case somebody's using them as a disciplinary enforcement?
Mr. Oats, you must have been a fly on the wall, because we went over this conversation about the new image of the, our Security Department. Number one, they're not classroom managers. That's not their role. They're there to assist and protect and ensure that if there is a situation, that they handle it according to post-certified training and the training that they have as professionals. That's number one. Number two, we understand that there's going to be situations in classrooms where, where there's a fight going on. And the analogy I use is, "Stop, please. Would you please stop? Please stop." And they continue fighting. And if you have two individuals fighting, then you know what happens. You start circling around, and you have more people, and before you know it, it's a blown-out fight and semi-riot in the classroom. So we, we are in a position to deal with those situations accordingly, according to the guidelines. And if there's a violation of the guidelines, Major Harris is on it. We investigate, and we make sure that we are in line with policy, protocol, and procedures. With that said, the new philosophy is about community engagement. The new philosophy is about student mentorship. We have a lot of the officers now that are mentors for some of the students, and students respect the officers. So my, my vision is, if you understand law enforcement work, it's very difficult, and we have split-second decisions to react to a situation. There's another thing that, that I asked Dr. Bedell and my team to participate in. We're going to have a cabinet meeting at the Justice Frontier firing range. And, and the reason I want to do this is I want them to experience on, what do they call that, screen, Marcus?
Simulator.
Simulator. They give you, what do they call those, those play guns with the laser? And then, they actually have classroom situations, and I see your eyes. We'll invite the board if you want to do that. But that's not a problem. And, and the purpose of this is really to understand the type of thinking that goes on in the classroom with those simulators. And, and I'll tell you one thing, you're going to be surprised at how your mind will change based on the training that these officers go through and how they react to these situations. A lot of times, we point the fingers, but a lot of times, we just don't know the work. So part of it is educating people on what they, they go through. So right now, it's, it's the board, I mean, the cabinet opportunity to experience that. And if you would like, the board, we would have an opportunity for you to experience those, those events, so you can see for yourselves what, what goes on in the minds of, of you making those decisions.
Let me just answer Mr. Oats' question. Something that I'm trying to push nationally with my role in the National School Resource Officer Organization is that if you use your SROs and you use your campus cops in the wrong way, then you, in essence, put them in a position where they simply will not be able to execute their duties as described on their job description. They are not disciplinarians. They should not be called to classes to handle routine things that an assistant principal or an administrator should be able to handle. Their job is to ensure that our campuses are safe, that they, that these kids and parents feel safe when they enter into our buildings, that there are people there that are, that are, that are warm and welcoming, but that most importantly, that our kids, when they come to school and leave, they're leaving only further educated as a result of being able to come into our school. So this is something that I do have an opportunity to really promote around how we utilize our SROs. And it's part of the reason why I moved them from under operations, because they were under operations. And I said, "This department needs to be under student support." What are they doing under operations? Because this is the department where they are, in essence, an additional ally in building those relationships that we need. So it's critical. So we're extremely ecstatic about the direction that this department is heading in with Marcus and Louise.
Board Member Evans?
I'm glad that you raised that question, Mr. Oats, because that was my thinking as well. Also glad that the officers are used as mentors, because, Major Harris, you probably can remember when, when officers were not allowed to interact with students at all. That was, that was a travesty. And you all remember when that police officer made the national news in the school where he wrestled this little girl, and there was a lot of uproar about the way that officers are supposed to conduct themselves in a building. And I'm hoping that that never happens in, in our schools. One of the things I see on, there are a lot of, lot of guns, and I don't remember guns before. Is that something that's new? And also, who, who pays for the uniforms, and why is it that Major Harris has on a different uniform?
I want to be better-looking than they are today. This is our dress uniform, and so we wanted to show you, we have two types of uniforms. We have a dress uniform for more like a formal occasion. Then we have a more relaxed uniform when we're in the schools and engaging students and parents.
We do, we do. This is, but this is important for me. I don't need my officers in schools in uniforms looking, making it like it's an us-against-them type scenario. And so for me, khakis, a polo shirt with your name on, and it's, I figure you all are much more comfortable, at least that's what I'm being told by the officers I've spoken to. And so, you know, yeah, absolutely.
And we have to buy them every year anyway, so it was going to happen.
And I'm getting the uniform too. I'm serious, because part, part of my responsibility to knowing their job is really riding along with them in every position so that I have a full understanding of what is happening, what needs to be done. And then, this way, we can make together decisions how to change things that need to be changed. No gun. My hands are deadly weapons, so.
No, I mean, the number of officers carrying guns. I've never seen that before.
Yeah, we have, we've always had officers with weapons in the school, like Dr. Cordova mentioned. We have probably, we've always, since I've been here, we've always have had officers in the schools that are armed with firearms. We just do a real good job of not making it be a focus. You know, we focus on, what we do is, you know, the rigorous hiring process that we have, that's to ensure that we have a culturally diverse, nurturing, and empathetic security person. And so, if you do that, then the gun fades away. But at the same time, it is a balancing act. We also have to maintain a command presence so that we instill confidence and assurance in our kids and our students and staff. Hey, yeah, we can't take care of business if we have to, and then we will step in front of any kind of person or thing that's there to harm you. We're not going to run away from it. We'll work toward it. So it is a balancing act.
Board Member Fiero?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few comments. Just want to commend all of our security officers. A couple of other things, I don't know if the board is aware of this, but, but Dr. Cordova certainly has many skill sets and expertises, but part of his professional background, he was in law enforcement in San Diego, California. Was it San Diego or Louis, Los Angeles?
Los Angeles Dodgers, California. Los Angeles Dodgers.
So, so I think, you know, that, that's an added benefit, but I think also, Dr. Bedell's move to, to incorporate them into the support staff versus in the other areas that they were previously in. A question I had, Dr. Cordova, and I couldn't remember on the training list, do the officers also go through any type of cultural competency and trauma-informed care training?
Actually, we have the CIT program. We've borrowed it from the Kansas City Police Department. All the officers have been trained in trauma-sensitive care. So when, when we, when we asked the major if we could train their, their team, he just jumped to the, to the occasion and said, "I want all my officers trained in the trauma-sensitive movement, trauma-informed care." And then, we have officers going to our CIT program. And we believe that, that is critical to the success of their intervention with students who may have a trauma, a mental health issue that needs to be addressed. And then, this way, they know how to handle it with the support of our social workers and our family support specialists. We work as a team. And even when the kids get in trouble, we want to know why. And then, this way, we, we can do an intervention before, you know, anything, you know, bad happens to the child.
My last question would be, of all of the, the, the security team, do we have individuals that are bilingual in some of the different languages that we have in our schools?
Yes. I believe we have approximately five or six officers that are bilingual.
Board Member Hartsfield?
I just want to say thank you for your professionalism and for your service.
We appreciate that, and thank you for your support.
I have one quick question, and you talked about the number of staff that we have. And I wondered, from your opinion, do you feel like we have the adequate staff to meet the needs that we have? And then, there's been some increasing incidents at some of our campuses that don't have assigned officers, not necessarily with students, but more so with parents and adults that are on campus. And so, are we, how are we addressing some of those challenges with those buildings that don't have assigned officers?
Okay, I'm, I'm going to just speak to the, the movement forward with creating a department environment where we're adequately paying our security professionals. With the amount of training that we had, we, we can, Kansas City Police Department said, "We would rather work with your team because we know you're properly trained than any other security officers around the area." So I, I would like to look at salaries for the officers, making sure they're appropriate to the profession and the specialty, because it's not the same. It's a specialty. It's a different special position, if you will. We're working with our friend Andrea Flinders to, to look at this and how, you know, I'm learning as I'm maneuvering the system, so that would be my ask. And, and then, that would take care of the, the turnover rate, because other departments, once we get trained here, then they move off to other, other departments pick, pick them up, because they're good training, you know. So the other piece is, the other question I think any of you could answer.
Well, we really rely heavily upon the, we really rely heavily upon the integrated security system. So, so we're trying, we're still just now, that's kind of new, so we're still trying to vet that out and see how successful we are at that. Once we get our, our head around and see if it's, it's really working for us, are we, if it's not working for us, we need to put more staff in the schools, then that's what we'll do. So we're all in the infancy stages of trying to make that decision.
And it would be helpful to know, in the Friday report update, is with our campuses, who has security and then, or officers, security officers there, and then, who doesn't? And then, there may be some information from the audit that we've already done with Stratagose that might give us some information of how we need to implement and make changes. But my other part that would be good for a Friday packet is regarding response time. So if you don't have a security officer that's assigned to your building, what is that integrated system that a building leader can depend on to say that they're going to get the response time to address any threats or any challenges that are in their building?
We'll, we'll, we'll put that in our Friday updates.
Final thing, and I'll send, I went to a session on this at MSBA, so I'll send the notes from there, but they're, all of their notes are online too, on the MSBA website in terms of their, their presentation, so that may be something you want to look at. But one of the things that they recommended from MSBA's level, which I appreciate the organizational chart that you have, their recommendation is that we're very clear as board members on who's responsible for what, so how that aligns with our emergency response plan that you've outlined, what pieces are assigned to the individuals, so that once you get into a crisis, that the individual, we know you're not trying to scramble to assign people. So that would be something good for the board member, the board members to be aware of.
Sure.
Madam Chair, before we move, thank you, gentlemen. The gentleman in the back by the exit door by the name of Dominique, he's one of our officers. Just wanted to give you a shout-out in public. He shoots about twenty percent from the three-point field, and it's a lot of work, but one of the gentlemen I play basketball with, I just wanted to say hi.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Dr. Bedell. Okay, so now from item three-point two, the superintendent will introduce any November fifteenth business items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will come to the board regarding asking the board to take action on the West Rock Creek demolition contract valued at a hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars at our next meeting.
Thank you. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for the evening. If there's no objection, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.